Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome, welcome to the common council meeting for the city of Beech Grove. Today's date is September 2nd, 2025. My name is James Kaufman, Mayor. I'll defer to the clerk treasurer.
And the overall call will introduce ourselves, starting on my right.
Chris Duffer, Council at Large.
Dan McMillan, Council at Large.
Elizabeth Lamping, Councilman District, Council Person District One.
Samantha Stratton, Clerk Treasurer.
Ryan Mackens, Council District Two.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Avis Freyson, Councilwoman District Four.
Mike Ernest, Council District Five.
Thank you. Have you anybody heard from Council Hemigard?
He's on vacation.
Okay, thank you.
He's trying to make it back.
Oh, true, fair enough. I had not heard from him, so thank you. If you want to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Up next, I have to call Pastor Bailey for invocation.
Good evening, council members and ladies and gentlemen of the community. If you'd be so kind as to bow your head, please. Lord, most loving Father, Lord, we pause in the midst of all of our activities in the chaos of this world, Lord, to ask you to bring the peace, Lord, that comes from your presence. Lord, we ask you to give wisdom to the council members, Lord, give understanding and protection to our community, Lord, and place a hedge of protection around our officers, Lord, as they protect us. Bring them home safely. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Bailey. There are no special presentations this evening. Onto committee reports. RDC, I heard from the President Matthew Kociefer, they do not have anything to report tonight, and they will further discuss about the conference of plan, the completion of that, and you'll hear more about that in our, at our October meeting. Financial report. Clerk Treasurer Stratton.
Good evening.
Good evening.
A reminder that the public budget hearing will be held on Monday, October 6th, and a second and third reading on Monday, October 20th. The recently passed sewer ordinance went into effect upon passage and publishing in the Indianapolis Star. This change was reflected on the sewer bill sent out last week. The bill for September from citizens came in today for $128,258.69, and this will be on the second docket of the month. Outside of tonight's discussion, I do not have other updates. I have attached visual representations of each amount in the draft Form Ones to reference throughout the workshop this evening. The bank account balances are listed below as of September 2nd, 2025. These totals do not include all claims that were approved earlier this evening. I've also included the city's fund balances to limit any confusion. City Corporation Bank Account, $6,605,765.8. Utility Bank Account, $732,666.96. Criminal Investigation Fund Bank Account, $602,386.87. RDC General Fund Bank Account, $1,895,185.37. Fund accounts, General Fund, $914,804.26. Sewage Utility Fund, $148,024.58. Stormwater Utility Fund, $521,046.39. Respectfully submitted, Samantha Stratton, Clerk Treasurer.
Thank you. Any questions for the clerk treasurer? Thank you. Up next, we have minutes from our last meeting. City, common, city council meeting dated August 4th, 2025. Any questions or comments? No question or comments? Motion to approve the city council meeting minutes dated August 4th, 2025.
I may say it motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Thank you. Up next, we have public comments. For to, uh, City Attorney?
Nope.
Looks like we have no one signed up for public comment tonight. Is there anyone who would like to speak this evening? All right, thank you. All right, there's no unfinished business from our previous meeting, and we'll move into new business. Tonight, we will hold our budget workshop. There will be no, no vote taken this evening. Before we get started here, I'd like to go over some information with the, with the council if that's okay. As I said, there will be no vote taken this evening. We will present the 2026 budget and salary ordinance on first reading only on October 6th, 2025. This workshop is for our councilors to ask questions, share ideas, and/or concerns. There will be no additional public comment during the workshop. SB 1 has been discussed for several months, and we don't truly know the effects that it will have on Beech Grove. There's no doubt that property tax relief needs to happen. However, how we proceed as a city will require us to all work together. Over the last month, I have met with each department head and clerk treasurer multiple times to come up with a game plan. Just last week, I met with councilors Duffer, Ernest, and Freyson, and I appreciate them taking the time to work on a solution and ask questions. As I've mentioned multiple times, I am open to meeting with any city councillor, and that also includes Council Hemigard, Lamping, McMillan, and Mackens, if they so choose. As a mayor and a resident, I am concerned about the future of our city. There's a lot of work to be done, and I urge you all to help with the process, which will include you reaching out to your state representatives in the coming months. Tonight's budget draft. There are two labor agreements that must be taken into consideration as we plan ahead for 2026. We'll hear from local 416 EMS reps, along with local FOP 86 police representatives tonight. These two labor contracts were negotiated back in 2023 with Mayor Buckley, and they include a 3% cost of living adjustment, along with other incentives, benefits, and increases in position pay. To be fair to our other employees throughout the city, we have carried this 3% salary increase across the board. These increases can be found in Category 1 on your draft budget. The draft salary ordinance was also included in your packet for review. We won't go over it line by line this evening, as I expected to change drastically prior to the next meeting. If you have any specific questions about it, we can discuss it after you have heard from each department. This draft that was, that was sent to you on Friday is a working document, and there have already been changes since it was sent to you on Friday. The minimal increases in categories 2, 3, and 4 that were in your packet have been removed, and you will see no increase in those categories. In the last few days, I have asked all department heads to come up with ideas in other areas to reduce their budgets for 2026. I'll let each of them share those ideas with you when they come up this evening. I appreciate them digging deep into the budgets. As I told them, anything we do in 2026 will mean less of a hit in 2027 and beyond. Each of them truly has the best interest in the city at heart and for our employees, and we are blessed to have each of them leading the way. If you have other ideas, please share with them tonight. That being said, there are a few areas in the budget that must increase, with the main one being the IFD fire contract, which will go up 3% or approximately $106,430 in 2026. Before we introduce each department, I will call Jeff Peters to expand on SB 1 and the anticipated effects that not only we'll see in Beech Grove, but on municipalities across the state. So, I'll defer to Jeff.
Can I ask real quick, what are, what are categories 2, 3, and 4 that you said there were no increases? What are those categories?
Supplies, service and charges, and then capital outlays.
Supplies, what do you say, what else?
Services, and then capital outlays is category four.
There were a few areas that had a 3% minimum increase just to offset costs, as things cost more, but we're going to go ahead and remove that based off of...
That was a very significant amount of money anyway. How much, what was the significant amount that was removed with those categories? What was the amount that was removed?
I'm sorry?
What, how much you said those categories removed?
We don't have, uh, it's still working.
We're gonna go through them in each department.
Yeah, we're gonna go back to department.
Yeah, no, they're minimal, but like I said, every little amount's gonna help offset what we have to do in 2027.
Thank you.
The information that the clerk treasurer printed out for us, does it have the latest?
It does not.
So that is as it's presented tonight?
It, it matches your other documents.
Okay.
So we'll, I'll give you another packet like that on October 6th or before probably, based on whatever you guys discussed tonight and changes that need to be made.
I'll call up Jeff Peters.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Since we last met, a few updates. Income tax distributions statewide have been initially certified. For Marion County, it's a little bit better than what we had in the fiscal plan. Also, the DLGF...
How much better?
Uh, just marginally.
Okay.
The, uh, DLGF has put out some additional working documents for the formulation of the 26 budget, and that looks, one of those documents looked at anticipating the initial 2026 impacts for Senate Bill 1 and those additional homestead credits. And to give you kind of a perspective as to how that works into your budgets, the budgets that you currently have before you, all those can be funded based on what you have and your anticipated revenue streams. However, they would be eating cash. And the amount of cash that we would be looking at for the fiscal plan versus this budget, it would consume about $600,000 for the year if you impose the budget that you have. We estimate, along with the DLGF, that you end 2025 with about 2.4 million in the general fund. We would anticipate that that would drop to about 1.8 million by the end of '26 if you impose the budget that you have. The DLGF thinks that amount would potentially drop all the way to 1.2 million. And a couple things factor in there. One is, they assume that you will spend all of your appropriations, which you typically do not, although you spend most of those. They also assume that there is no supplemental income tax distribution, which you have had historically for the last several years. We would anticipate that that continues, which would be a couple hundred thousand dollars difference. And then back to the worksheet that they provided. We anticipated that your circuit breaker increase, your circuit breaker for 2025, and this is the amount of your property tax levy that you're assigned by statute that you do not actually get to collect because all these different properties hit the 1%, 2%, and 3% tax caps. You lose in 2025 about $3.2 million a year. So if you go back prior to the tax caps, you would have gotten as a community an extra $3.2 million a year in property taxes. But in '25, that loss is about 3.2 million. The fiscal plan that we talked about last time anticipated that rising to about 3.45 million. The DLGF worksheet that they've put out anticipates 3.87 million. However, we do not know the global assumptions that the DLGF used to derive that amount, and the real numbers won't be known until we get tax rates certified for the 26 budget cycle, which will be the end of the year, early January, maybe early February. And then those rates get applied to that property tax abstract in March that generates all the billings. So next March, we'll know which one of those numbers is more correct, and it'll be probably somewhere in the middle of those. So to give you some idea, like I say, based on our numbers, I think this budget expends about $600,000 more than revenue in '26. Could be as much as 1.2. The further assumptions for the income tax or for the revenue of the budgets, it assumes that you will continue to pay the sewer pilot at 142,196 in '25 and '26, and the return on investment from the sewer at 406,892. So I left it at the same amount you've paid the last couple of years. If you do not impose sewer rates that would allow you to do that, then you're gonna burn that much more cash. And to follow up on our conversation before, we had talked about, historically, you had a return on investment as high as 706. So if you wanted to offset part of the $600,000 that you are beyond balanced in 2026, you could raise sewer rates enough that you could make a pilot payment or a return on investment payment of 706. So then you'd only be about $300,000 upside down. Just things the way of what you do, what you don't do, and kind of where you're going with your sewer rates, their influence on this budget.
Jeff, I got a question.
Sure.
Does that still include the 14 to 15 salaries coming out of the sewer fund at present time?
Anything that has historically been paid out of there now continues in this assumption, yes.
Okay.
So just so the public understands, in order to correct this $600,000 shortfall, one of the options is to ask the citizens of Beech Grove to pay more if, for this budget?
In the sewer fee?
Right, right.
Correct, that's one of the options.
Ask the citizens to pay more for, for this budget.
Yes, and none of those things are...
Which 3% raises for everyone.
Um, that I'll defer to.
Yeah, well, we'll get into that.
Okay, well, just so they know, that, 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 you'll be asking the citizens of Beech Grove substantially more money to support this budget that would give everyone 3% raises across the board. That's, that's, I just...
They're not related, those are two separate things.
Okay, okay, okay.
The other thing I would like to mention is, you know, none of these things are required. You know, the pilot and the ROI is optional. The amount of that is optional. Funding the budget, even though your $600,000 upside down, you can fund the budget and consume that amount of cash. The problem with that is, as we go forward in time, that will get harder and harder. And, you know, then you won't be able, there will be a time when we have the conversation that, hey, the DLGF's only gonna certify this amount, your budget's this amount, you're gonna have to cut it to meet what they're going to allow you to spend. And then we go back to years ago, you remember when we did tax anticipation warrants? We had to go to the bond bank, borrow cash just to make payroll.
It's basically a payday loan for the government.
It had favorable interest rates, but it had professional fees, and it was, yeah, not a good way to operate. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So with that, I was, had, was, had a conversation with someone with what you were just talking about, borrowing money to meet your, meet your needs. If you get a significant amount of money and you put that in the bank and draw interest off of it, you could actually maybe make some money off of it, you pay down, you pay back what you owe, but then you can actually maybe make some interest, make some revenue off of the amount that you borrowed.
That's called arbitrage.
Okay.
You are allowed to make arbitrage profits in certain circumstances.
Okay.
Not most.
Okay.
If you get into a certain situation, you actually have to do a calculation
Okay.
for the federal treasury and remit any of your
Okay.
arbitrage earnings back to the federal government.
Okay.
Because whenever you borrow, you borrow at tax exempt rates.
Okay.
And a lot of times, they look at that example that you have overissued on purpose
Okay.
to do that exercise.
Okay.
You're not allowed to do that, therefore, and I don't know why it goes to the federal government, but that's where the refund goes.
Thank you.
You mentioned that we're, the way I understood it to be, that we will probably have to do some additional appropriations to even get through '25. Am I correct on that?
That's your standard additional appropriation. You, you have for several years budgeted an amount for personal services in the general fund from the Public Safety Income Tax Fund. But all your payroll functions are in the general fund. So you make this payment from Public Safety Income Tax as like a transfer into your general fund. Then you do the additional appropriation in order to expend those, towards those payroll. And why you don't have the expenditures directly from the Public Safety Income Tax Fund is you would have to reprogram your payroll function to say, oh, I'm gonna pay 73% for this police officer out of the general fund and 27% from the other fund. It would be an administrative nightmare. So it's an additional appropriation, but it's nothing that wasn't already preprogrammed into the '25 budget.
Can you explain to the citizens what would happen in the case of a default in '26? And I'm still concerned about '25, so could you tell us what happens?
A default in what form?
Yeah, we don't have the money to play, pay salaries.
There should be no reason for '25, '6, and '7 that you will not have sufficient revenues to pay all of your anticipated obligations, including payroll.
So you're saying our taxes that are coming in will be enough to support this government for '25, '26, and '27?
Based on what I think you will approve in budgets in '26 and '27, the cash you have on hand, and those revenue streams that don't change prior to '28, yes, I have no reason to believe that you would default or come anywhere near that. '28's a different, yeah, a different discussion.
So the last time we met, you made it very clear that we should do everything we could to capture money, keep money, and have more money. In your opinion, does this do a good job of that?
This budget?
Yeah.
Again, you're consuming cash, and I leave that to, to you as the fiscal body and the service providers. You know, you have to provide a certain level of service to your people.
Yeah.
Is it worth consuming $600,000 of cash or $300,000 of cash? Or do you cut it back so that you equalize it to save as much going forward? You know, that's really a, I think, a more of a service question from your side. But, yeah, being that we have no solution in 2028 or no concrete answers as to what your revenue stream is, I would be as cautious as you can.
And, and there would be a way that we could basically keep the budget comparable to what it was from 2024 to 2025? That would be a wise, a wise approach, I would guess.
I didn't look at it in those parameters. I looked at it on what was proposed versus what the revenue stream was. But, yeah, I would think that would get you closer to...
But if we could try to keep that budget closer to the last, keep this one comparable to the one before.
Do you know off the top of your head, Mayor, what the budget increase was proposed versus '25 actual?
4.9%.
Pardon?
4.9%.
Do you know what dollar amount that was, approximately?
Uh, I do not. I do know Category 1 increases across the board. I can find it. It's 1 point something.
Okay.
Yeah, I can find it. Give me 30 seconds. But just don't wait for me, I will find it.
Jeff, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
So since, you know, your last talk, which I think, you know, it was a reality check for a lot of folks, I had a chance to talk to some colleagues in other cities, see how they were gonna address this problem. And I also looked at the bill a little closer, and it looks like that, you know, property taxes are gonna go down, but it'd be, some of that would be recaptured through income. How does that, is there enough data out there to do a study to show how it's gonna affect the city of Beech Grove? So in other words, I think in the last census data, it showed that the average household income in 2020, I think, was 50, $52,000. So are we gonna collect more taxes or less taxes as a result if the bill is not changed?
If the bill is not changed, the amount that you're going to have authority as the city fiscal body is you'll be allowed to impose 1.2% on just the citizens within Beech Grove.
On income?
On income.
Okay.
On your question of, is there adequate data? No. The data set for the income tax base in Beech Grove does not exist. So what we worked into your fiscal plan is I looked at that per capita, per household income, multiplied it by that, and then I equalized it looking at Marion County's tax base because the, that federal data is a different formula for what's going to be subject to Indiana local income tax. So I equalized what your number was versus all of Marion County because we know what Marion County's tax base is as a group. Again, I had no better way to do that. Part of the legislation does say that the Department of Revenue is to collect that data beginning in '25. So I really don't anticipate, though, we'll have a good data set until '27 when it comes time for you to set that income tax rate. But even if you set that income tax rate, I don't think it's going to be enough to offset all the income tax you get today in both the public safety lit and the general fund's certified shares. I think there will be enough there to offset the certified shares in the general fund, but today, you get north of $2 million a year in the public safety income tax fund. And I don't think that's recouped. There is, as we talked about before, the legislation says the county, on its volition, can impose up to 0.4% countywide for fire and EMS. And it says if they impose those income taxes for fire and EMS, they get shared mandatorily with all fire territories, fire districts, and municipal fire departments. Under that definition, because you have a fire contract and no longer have a fire department, I don't think you qualify. So I don't think you share in any of that pool. However, I think that's an oversight of the legislation. I don't think they intended to do that, particularly with the size of your EMS department that you have. So we did work that into your fiscal plan to replace some of that public safety income tax. Again, I don't think it replaces all of it. So I think you're going to have some struggles where you will have less revenue in those out years, so you're probably gonna have to thin down some. But again, we have two legislative cycles. On the floor of the House and the Senate, in the final passage of those bills, the sponsor stood up and said, we know this isn't perfect. We've got time to make changes. So I suspect you'll have changes in both the '26 and '27 sessions. I think probably more in the '27 session because it'll be a long session. So a lot of these answers, we're truly not gonna have until late April, May of '27. And, you know, by the time everybody analyzes that, you can act on that beginning July 1 of '27, but you have to have it done by October 1 of '27. So it's gonna be a big rush to absorb all that data, do all that number crunching, and get you in a position where you can impose those rates, and the county can impose rates, et cetera.
The, the new formula, when does that kick effect? So in other words, will they start taxing income as opposed to not as much on property? Is that '27?
The property tax relief starts now in '26, so the budget you're talking about. It has additional, in the 1% property with your homesteads, it, between 2026 and 2031, it's going to ratchet down and have reductions to the assessed value that take it down to 1/3 of what it is today. Now, today, you have a standard homestead credit and a supplemental homestead credit. That standard homestead credit is $48,000. The supplemental homestead credit is 37.5% of the remainder. So realistically, that number might be 50% today. So in your assessed value to set your tax rates, et cetera, on the 1% property, 50% of it's taxable. By 2031, only 33% of that's gonna be taxable. On the 2% property, which is agricultural, rental residential, extended care facilities, those today are at 100%. There are no deductions. By 2031, it's gonna be down to 2/3. So it'll be 66.7%. And then for the business people, they included additional reductions to business personal property. So today, if you have a business and your acquisition cost for business personal property is $80,000 or less, you don't file a tax return. Therefore, it's not on your tax base. You don't have to pay taxes on it. In pay '27, that number jumps to $2 million. So how many small businesses, small manufacturers are now not going to file that tax return, and it's not gonna be on your tax base? Therefore, you know, they're all getting this property tax relief, which is going to drive your rate higher, which will make more and more properties hit those 1%, 2%, and 3% tax caps in larger amounts. So you're going to net collect fewer tax dollars on the property tax side. Again, to me, this is kind of the continuation of tax caps originally. They, originally, like I say, today, your tax cap loss is about 3.2 million a year. So that was reducing property taxes, and the legislature's replacement for you was income taxes. Now, you didn't have any income tax authority, but at the county level, they imposed public safety income tax, and statutorily had to share part of it with you, which amounted to a couple million dollars a year to help offset that. They also had the ability to raise some additional income taxes, and I think that's the same road they're headed down today. But right now, they don't seem to all line up so that you're going to have enough money beginning in 2028 to go forward. The income tax part does not begin until 2028 under the new rules. The income tax part does not begin until twenty twenty eight under the new rules and distribution.
So, cities have the availability, or liability to raise their local income tax? Is that?
Beginning in twenty twenty eight.
Twenty twenty eight.
You have to act on it between July one of twenty seven and October one of twenty seven.
And then, you know, properties, I mean, I'm not a mortgage expert, but seems like properties are already assessed values are pretty much at their max. So, if assessed properties start to fall, we fall into a situation where property values fall, that's gonna, again, decrease the property taxes that we would receive, I would guess.
Yes, because it's going to drive that property tax cap credit higher, and you're going to net collect fewer dollars. Now, if we continue to have the assessed value growth that we've seen, and everybody's assessment goes up, you know, you only have to pay one percent on your homestead. If it's, you know, um, a two-hundred thousand dollar house.
But realistically.
Then you pay the two thousand the next year. If it's two-hundred-and-twenty thousand, then you pay the twenty-two hundred. So, you could potentially get more money if the assessed values continue to grow.
Yeah, yeah.
But with real estate sales down, uh, that would work just the opposite.
Yeah, and, you know, when was the last time we saw a recession?
It's due.
How bad is, yeah, that's kind of what I, it's due at some point, and
Every seven years.
How severe will it be and how long will it be?
It's due.
Those may be some lean property tax years.
Yeah.
So, again, you know, try to be conservative.
I have that budget difference from year over year. It's nine hundred seventy-nine thousand, one hundred fifty-eight dollars.
Okay. So, yeah, if you went back to that, Liz, um, you would cover the six hundred thousand and then have another almost four hundred thousand for the positive.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Peters?
I got one. So, you're saying, going back to the sewer rates, that twenty six, twenty seven can be fully funded without raising the sewer rates? Or we would need to raise the sewer rates?
No, I, you, you are severely underfunded on the sewer side, and I would have to defer to the clerk treasurer as to how far behind you are. But one of the sewer expenditures each year is a payment to the city general fund for payment in lieu of tax.
Right.
For a hundred and forty-two thousand and some change. And there's another line item that goes from the sewer to the general fund for return on investment, which historically has been, the last few years, about four hundred and six thousand. And we've had it as high as seven hundred and six thousand per year. If you do not set those rates high enough to make those payments, then you're going to have less money in the general fund in order to fund not only this budget, but twenty seven and few, and forward.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Uh, the one question I ask you, if Beach Grove as a city went into fault, how does that? How do they break it down? Does Indianapolis take us over? Does the state? How does that work?
I don't know that we've ever seen a municipality default.
And I've done minimal research on it. There's no precedent. Um, I know the state comes into my office pretty quickly. If, if that happens, um, it's me out first. But then I pass that. There's no precedent for this kind of thing.
And I would say, um, what we worry, worry about from the financial advisor side would be default on the bonds. There's not gonna be any default on the bonds for the fact that they are secured by the property taxes of the people. So, even if you refuse to repay the bond debt service? Thank you, Mayor. Um, even if you, as a fiscal body, said, no, we're not gonna levy the tax for the debt service to repay the bonds for the police station and the, and the shooting range, the state would step in and they would impose that tax levy on your people, collect the money for the principal and interest due and pay the bondholders. So, that's kind of self-curing. It'll take care of itself. You know, what you do today and going forward, where you do this fiscal planning and we talk about what situation you're in, you'll know years ahead of time if you're not going to make it. And then I guess the decision would be, you know, do you continue at a lesser level to be a city? Or do you unincorporate and go back to, uh, being part of the county, part of the unincorporated, well, I was gonna say. In the other ninety-one counties, it would be back to the unincorporated part of the county. To yours, it would be the incorporated county under Unigov.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Jeff.
Hey, thank you.
All right, council members. So, we'll go through each department now. If you have the sheet that clerk treasurer sent out with the appropriations, proposed budget changes, we're gonna start there. Uh, we'll start off with the mayor's budget here. So, as it was drafted, it has a three percent increase, um, outside of category two for office miscellaneous. We have a three percent increase based off of the twenty twenty-five. For a total proposed budget, a hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars for two thousand and twenty-six. Any questions about that?
The three percent increase is for salaries? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. So, you have, this is the
So, salary increase of three percent?
Correct. So, this is, the first one is the mayor's salary on the, on the, I'm sorry?
Okay, no, I'm just, yeah, go ahead.
Would you like to know the total difference in all category ones right now?
That's okay. I'm listening.
Okay, 'cause it's two hundred and forty thousand across the board for all departments.
Yeah, for that, that three percent there. Um, so the first one is the mayor's side, the general side, um, three percent. Um, and the second one is for, uh, my administrative assistant. Um, that is a three percent increase for her line item there. So, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about salaries. We're gonna do all that. So, I know it does have three percent there, but like I said, we can, there, there's a few changes tonight. So, that first one can, that three percent will go away. You see the budget in October for the mayor's salary. So, that'll remain the same as two thousand and twenty-five.
Oh, I'm sorry. Say that again. So, the mayor won't get a three percent raise?
I, correct.
Okay.
That's what I'm proposing. If you guys want to vote otherwise, that's on the city council.
That's perfectly good. Thank you.
Any other questions on the mayor's budget?
Um, I'd just like to make a statement that I'm opposed to any three percent in any department increase when we just had to, uh, initiate an increase on sewer bills. Uh, there's people barely making it, and, uh, I think it's a, a terrible precedent for us to offer a three percent increase when we're hearing all the doom and gloom that, uh, is out there.
Thank you.
We have, we have labor agreements, though.
Correct. So, yeah, we're, we're getting those two labor agreements, as I mentioned earlier, Council McMillan, um, and that is why the three percent is there because of that.
So, that would have to be a volunteer for them to not get that three percent?
Correct. They'd have to open up negotiations again, correct. Because these were negotiated back in two thousand and twenty-three, and I'll let those union representative spoke seek to on a minute. That's okay. Up next, we have the clerk treasurer's budget, um, and I'll defer to the clerk treasurer for that. But that has, um, minimal increases there. I know we talked about categories two, three, and four. Uh, we won't see an increase in those as we originally presented, um, with the new numbers that we're hearing from Mr. Peters. So, those two, uh, those categories will not go up, but I'll defer to the clerk treasurer.
So, initially, in my, uh, category three, I reduced it by six percent by moving some things around, lowering my, um, legal budget because I don't foresee myself needing more than five thousand dollars next year. I, myself, am willing to not take any raise. I'm not going to do that on behalf of my employees, um, just because I think, I, maybe it's not three percent, maybe it's something minimal, but I think we have to remember that we employ people. Um, and some of them rely on their jobs. They also have, some of them live in Beach Grove. Some of them also have seen their, um, everything increase as we all have. So, I'm not gonna volunteer that for my entire department. I will volunteer that for myself. Um, and if, uh, that happened, my entire budget would increase by less than one percent.
Any questions for the clerk treasurer?
Um, I'd just like to comment again, um, uh, opposed to any raises, no matter who they are. And I would like to revert back to the twenty-five budget.
Understood.
And cut it by five percent across the board.
Any other questions for the clerk treasurer? Okay, so that's the
No questions, but I would like to commend the both of you for, uh, giving up your three percent.
Up next is the city council budget. So, um, right now, it has that three percent for category one, um, and then no increases in category, uh, three.
As the council
Any questions on that?
I would say the council should give up their three percent. I want to. I don't want a three percent raise. I don't want a three percent. I would rather, I would rather make sure that we do keep our employees and we do keep our city and we do keep our services and we do keep everyone that we need solidly. So, no, we need, do not need a raise.
Also, I'd like to point out to the council to keep it at parity. Um, I also reduced your attorney fees because you have not used it this year, same as me. So, that actually lowers your entire, um, category one, two, and three by three point eight one percent.
Uh, I've seen you increase the city attorney's, uh, attorney fees.
With by three percent, and they'll probably, we, it's up to a discussion.
Yeah, we'll get to that.
This was not a set in stone budget. This was
This is just a draft. That's all it was.
Well, I say, again, I wanna go back to the twenty-five budget.
I'm aware.
And no increases.
Any other, any other questions about the city council budget?
I, I got a question. Since Councilor McGarn's not here, we all have said that we'll take no raise. Do we need to wait for him?
No, I mean, if, if you, if we can present it as such, and if he wants to make amendment to, to give himself a three percent raise, that, that would be your discussion on October sixth.
I would even be willing to reduce it if we needed to.
Yeah, for sure.
I would be willing to reduce it if we needed to.
Yep.
Yeah, let me know if you guys, if that's what you guys want, want me to present. Just let me know. But we can not, we can always advertise it as such, and if you guys want to vote publicly to reduce it at that October sixth meeting, you can do that as well.
I do feel, can I just restate one thing? Because I feel like it's just gonna keep coming up. So, just so you guys know, as you listen to each department head, and again, they're all willing to make adjustments and have discussions and things like that. I know Jeff's just said six hundred thousand. So, the cost of a three percent payroll increase across the board, which doesn't include public safety because we didn't touch that, it's the same numbers as last year, is two hundred thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. That includes union obligations, um, and union obligations are roughly a hundred thirty-ish thousand dollars. So, just keep that in mind, um, when you're, if, if you're trying to find money places, it has to be also found somewhere else. If you're looking to make up that total six hundred deficit, it's not just category ones.
Okay, and that leads us to the court. So, you have the court budget in front of you. Um, again, we'll see no increases outside of category one. That has a three percent for the employees, uh, and the judge as well, so.
I'd like to state for the record, I'm opposed to that.
Any other questions on the court? I know they, they have a very minimal budget as it is outside of their category one. Most of it is our, is their people.
Uh, the court does not pay any rent to anybody for, uh, their office space down at, uh, police station.
I think we're obligated under state law, the same year obligated to provide the clerk treasurer's space. I believe you're obligated to provide the judge since he's in the elected official.
So, you want the, the Beach Grove City Court to pay rent?
No, I'm asking if they do.
Okay, yeah, no, huh, yeah.
No.
No departments pay rent for their buildings or their office space. Any other questions on the court? Up next, we have Board of Works.
Well, as far as the court, I apologize. Did you reach out to the court to ask what their thoughts were on this? Did you reach out to the court?
I did, yes. Yeah, I did. And, and they're supportive of, uh, pay increases for their employees.
Okay.
What about the judge?
Uh, he didn't take himself out of there. He just said he's supportive of paying increases for their, for their department. I can reach back out and see if he would forego that.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And if he does agree to do that, can we celebrate something?
Sure, absolutely.
I mean, anything that's good, we, we just pass right over it. I think it would help us if we celebrate some good stuff.
I agree. If we can have some positivity in this room, that'd be great, absolutely, and online. That'd be even better.
Yeah, I think it deserves some kind of celebration. If we just give a hand clap, I don't understand why we can't be happy about something.
I'm right there with you. Um, so next is the Board of Works. Um, there's a few increases there. Um, I'll defer to the clerk treasurer. She can speak more about the increases that we see. I know some of this for, uh, insurance, if you can kind of
Yeah, so the category one is, um, for Board of Works, uh, board members. But then also you've got things like the citywide, uh, medical insurance is in there, so that's for all of our full-time employees. You've got dental insurance for everybody, life insurance, Medicare. Those things tend to go up year over year, uh, whether you're in the private or business sector. So, we have to kind of, we have to account for increases there, um, just because we don't want to get to the end of the year and not have money in those lines to pay them. In terms of professional services, um, I think we could probably keep it at fifty thousand dollars, um, instead of the three percent. Um, that line is tight every year, but, um, I, we'll just have to be tight, which is fine. Um, contractual services, um, that, and I would like to keep that with some increase, whether it's one, whether it's two. But those, that line pays for, like, for contractors, supplies, things like that, that we have to, um, account for inflation and what they are charging us. Um, I can have the mayor speak about the electrical and building commissioner here in a moment. But anything that is insurance-related, we do need to increase, um, this year. Um, we could probably drop the, uh, medical insurance down to five percent instead of nine percent. However, I do want to, uh, note that next year, with, um, how the, I don't know its real name, but the big beautiful bill, um, is going to affect private and municipal insurances because with those Medicaid cuts, it's gonna drive rates up. So, that's not something that we ever are gonna be able to put zero at, unfortunately, unless there's major, um, federal legislative overhaul. Telephone and cable goes, went up because our providers, they go up. Um, so that's something, not something that we can just stop paying, uh, without being in default. The computer software line can also go down, still stay at twenty-three thousand. I think we're in a, a good space right now in terms of what we needed to do to fulfill state obligations with, um, streaming and recording, so.
What about the computer servers?
Computer servers, that is everything, everything. That's, um, that's, you, I've, you've seen this set up more than I have. It's in the police station, but it powers, like, anything that's on a K drive, C drive, D drive for everybody. So, it's the community center, it's me, it is police, it's EMS, it's, it's all of the community.
All the communications for the entire city government, basically.
And we have to pay for storage and the correct, like, to keep things running.
But that's a ten thousand dollar increase for this coming year?
I'm sorry, what, I'm, which line is that? I apologize. I'm sorry, is it ten thousand?
Yeah, ten thousand.
I'm looking at the Form twos. I apologize.
It goes from fifty thousand to sixty thousand?
I think that actually just might be an error because we were talking about
I think we were talking about that a little bit. I think that might have
I think that's in the wrong line.
Okay, fair enough.
Um, so, yeah, that will definitely change.
Okay.
Does that can stay at the fifty thousand dollars?
Yes.
Question, did you put out any of the liability insurance, medical insurance for bid?
We did last year. Uh, medical insurance right now is the best that I think we can get with AIM. Um, I, and I have not sent this out to employees yet, but their, their election, selections will be made by Friday, and then we can communicate that, that there's minimal to no
No, I mean someone other than AIM.
No, we are sticking with AIM, I believe. We're part of their trust, so we pay into it.
You're still with Walker and
Yep.
For like, for workers' comp, right?
Workers' comp, and, uh, the other one, I can't remember.
NFP?
NFP.
NFP, yeah. So, you're sticking with them also?
For, yeah, twenty twenty-six. We bid out last year, and they were the best choices.
Well, I think that's something needs to be done every year, especially in a tight year.
That could, yeah, that can definitely be done for twenty twenty-seven, but it takes four to five, it takes a long time to bid out, which I'm happy to do. But it will not be, you will not get, it's too close to the end of the year to sign new twenty twenty-six contracts for insurance.
But I've done it in the past, and it usually saves the city money.
Which is why we bid it out last year, and we had the best rates last year.
Yeah, I think
And we typically bid out every three years, but I can bid it out next year if you would like. That's all I have on those lines.
Any other questions? And, uh, the, uh, building inspector and the, um, medical inspector, that can stay at the, at the rate that it's currently at, so with no increase here as well. Any other questions on the Board of Works?
Is compliance on the Board of Works or where you have it now?
Police.
Uh, they've been, uh, they were on the, but, they've been under police for several years now.
Okay, that's fine.
Any other questions on the Board of Works? Up next, we have, um, NVH and LRNS. Um, so I'll present that now. So, we have, if you kind of go down the line there as well, um, we have salaries going up three percent. Something that we've always had in the past, we're temporary and part-time employees at DPW. Over the last several years, Director Brad Meriwether kind of moved that over to all full-time employees. So, we don't have any part-time employees over there, yet we still budget for that. So, I would recommend cutting that part-time salary in half. We've always budgeted at forty-seven thousand dollars, but again, I think we can cut that in half and take that down to twenty-seven thousand dollars. There would be no increases in categories two and three. And you get to category, category four, and that is our capital improvements for the NVH fund, okay? So, contractual projects, it is currently at eighty-two five. We're going to take that down to seventy-five thousand dollars. Hand in Arlington Roundabout, this year is budgeted a hundred and five. That will go to construction in two thousand and twenty-six. And we're, we will need about ninety-five thousand dollars for that. So, that'll go down ten thousand dollars. The Emerson Church and Roundabout, that'll go from this year, we budgeted two seventy-seven. Next year, we will need approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that project. And then the sidewalks and paving, each year, we've tried to progressively increase our sidewalk budget each and every year. And it used to be at about fifty, fifty thousand dollars. We bumped it up to sixty-six thousand dollars this year. So, we can always tip away at that if it's something that the council wants to do. We've been very good about improving our sidewalks throughout the city, making it more walkable and getting rid of, rid of tripping hazards. So, I, I'm fearful of that. I don't want to get rid of that, but it's something that we are able to, if that's something that the council wants to do. But that is currently budgeted at sixty-five thousand dollars.
How much have we already spent on Churchman and Emerson Roundabout?
Uh, I'd have to give those numbers to you, so I'm not sure. Well, this year, you guys budgeted two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. I don't know if we've spent all that this year or not.
My thing is, I think that's a waste of money. Churchman and Emerson is not a good place in my estimation for a roundabout. So, as far as I could say, we could-
Well, the engineers and the, the experts on it, they've, they've decided otherwise based on the safety studies that were there. It is one of the most dangerous intersections in the county. So, that is why we've received several million dollar, no?
No, I'm saying, I disagree with you and-
Okay, you're laughing, okay. Okay, I'm sure you're laughing. I wasn't sure. Okay. So, they, no, they, they, they had the safety studies that, that backed it up as well, so. But that won't, you won't see that until probably twenty-seven or twenty-eight. Uh, and then NVH restricted, that'll remain the same at two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars for the NVH. LRNS, this is our gravel and salt. So, that, we're recommending that be seventy thousand dollars for gravel and salt. Contractual services will be eighty thousand dollars. And then LRNS street and alley improvements will go to three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. For a total budget for LRNS of four hundred seventy-six thousand dollars, five hundred and eighty-five dollars. And that's an estimated decrease of about ninety-three thousand dollars from this year's budget. But I think with what we have on the NVH side and help from, from other entities with our, our grants that we received, our community crossings grants, and the RDC, we'll have plenty of money to fund our projects next year.
Now, I know, I saw that somewhere, there was a, you had a concern for the, the increase of salt and stuff for the roads. Do you have any estimate on how much that's, but you, you're comfortable with the amount that we-
Yeah, I don't know where that came from. No, I, I think we're good on that. So, that's why I said, we, we have plenty of salt. We, we order it each and every year. We have a salt barn out there. And it's, we, we continue to order it and we always have leftovers from the year before.
That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah, so we have plenty of, I, I, no, there's-
And so, that's not, that's not an issue or a strength?
I don't, correct. I don't think so because we have plenty of it out there. So, yeah. Yeah, so no, I, I don't have any concerns with that. And I think the guys out there at DPW would agree. Any other questions on NVH or LRNS? Okay, so that leads us into our labor agreements, okay? And then we'll get to the rest of the other departments after we hear from them. So, first, I'd like to call up Rob Cheshar to discuss the EMS budget for next year. Discuss some changes that, that he would foresee that would be eligible, that were something that, you know, feasible for next year that he'll present. And then we'll, he'll call up the, the union representative as well, so. Hear from Rob first.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll, I'll be brief for you this evening. I appreciate your time and thanks for hearing us out this evening. Currently, the budget submitted, our budget is broken up into four categories. Category one, two, three, and four. And then we also receive money out of the public safety tax for reinvestment for such as new ambulances, which is actually on the docket for next year. When you take a look at our budget, category one, personal services. The Beach Grove EMS Department is unionized under Indianapolis Local four sixteen. And their agreement regarding wage increases is outlined in the contract with the city of Beach Grove. The contract with the city has allocated wage increases for staff and ca, and these are calculated based on factors such as requirements for two ALS units staffed twenty-four seven, overtime based on FLSA requirements, and backfilling for employees, including sickness, vacation, and comp time. The initial budget that was submitted to you had zero increases in category two, three, and four for twenty twenty-six. These categories, they all contain crucial items for the infrastructure and maintenance of our ambulances. It covers medical supplies, fuel, some very important items. Our budget for category two, three, and four is only two hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. So, that is a very small amount allocated for maintenance, repair, the daily operations, infrastructure of our vehicles and our station. So, in speaking to Jim and listen what Jeff Peters had to say. He asked, what, what can you cut over your operational budget? I said, you know, well, I'm prepared to work with the council. If they come and they ask for a one percent, we'll work through it. If they ask for up to five percent, we're definitely work through it. We will work to make things happen and fit within the needs of the city. It's, it's very important. And we take this information very seriously. And we take a look at the sustainability of the city, not only this year, but next year and forward down the line. And always try to leave it better than what we found it. So, when you take a look, yes, we're willing to work and get those items cut back to assist. When you take a look at the EMS and our overall budget, the line share does revolve around personal services. Next year, we will have a cut in our part-time administrative assistant, Jim Pierce. Jim's been with us for a long time. He's worked for the city prior to going to I F D. Jim helped maintain all of our CAD, our computers, our ESO computers. He did quality assurance for the department. He had a lot of items that he did for the city. And he is very knowledgeable in all these. But he will not be with us next year. I, I hate to see Jim go. He's been a mentor and very valuable to our department. And I've appreciated everything he's done for us. This savings will be about twelve thousand dollars for the city with his cut. When you look at our ambulance revenue, we're projected to bring in one point six to one point seven million this year in ambulance revenue. And you have to ask, well, how can we help the city increase revenue? And we've talked before about placing a third medic in service with part-time personnel. And the reason we would do this is, is twofold. One, Med Bill can separate that revenue from this part-time medic truck. And you can put that funding directly in a non-reverting fund for ambulance lease payments. You can make sure, and you can have oversight through a council member, through the public. And we can discuss and make sure that we're on track and stays on track and it's positive money for the city. But if we place a third truck in service, you're going to create more revenue. And that revenue can be reinvested back into the Beach Grove EMS department for those ambulances. Because frankly, equipment is expensive. We ordered an ambulance three years ago. And three years ago, we had no idea, never even thought that, you know, Sentinel ones will happen and the cities will have to reanalyze what they're doing and how to take a look at things. So, we are willing to work at that. I talked to our sales rep. He's talked to the company. And at this point in this venture, we really need to work on getting this ambulance in for us. We have Medic fifty-six, which already has over ninety-five thousand miles on it. And this new ambulance will be replacing Medic fifty-six as a primary truck. With anything mechanical, you have issues. There's been days where we've had one truck out of service for a week. We've had two trucks out of service. And that puts us in a very bind, providing EMS services to the citizens. If you put this truck off, you're starting off at point zero right now for another three years. And I'll be honest with you, I, I don't think your EMS services could sustain three years down the road without another new medic truck. And my suggestion for you is keep that payment in for next year, the lease payment for that new truck in for next year. And use it to help pay off what we owe on one of our current medic leases, pay that lease off. And then we'll push back our delivery date instead of March of twenty twenty-six. We'll push that delivery back till September and then that lease payment won't come due till the following year. It's pushing it off, but in order to pay off a truck, I think it'd be more beneficial to the city. So, it's just something that I, I think we need to speak, speak about. I think we need to talk to the mayor about it and see what we can't do to help the financial burden of the city at this point. But I, I think you're, back to my point, is, is having that third medic truck in is going to help the city financially. And that can definitely be seen as a tangible income for the city. So, those are just some of the ideas that I had for EMS. And those are only with category two, three, and four. And the new ambulance, Local four sixteen is the sole negotiator over salaries and personal services. And Reagan's going to come up and speak to you. If there's any questions you have over category two, three, or four, I'd be glad to answer those. If you think of something later, please feel free to email me, reach out, call, stop by the station. I would love and welcome all of you to come down and see your services that you have invested in the city.
So, so does your salary increase represented from Local four sixteen? Could you say no to your three percent raise then to kind of help us out a little bit?
Uh, I, I could. It's, I, I'd like to see what the union does. I'll, I'll be honest with you. I'm going to see what they do. I work for the mayor. And if the mayor came and we discussed changes in my salary, I, I think that's something private and the membership, they don't need to know about it, so.
And then as far as, like, when you mentioned Med Bill, maybe Reagan could answer, but the percentage, what, from what I understand, what we, we, our return for what we get for charges for EMS service is quite high compared to other, other townships. Is that correct?
We do have a good return. Another option is, you know, no one likes to hear about, you know, sewer bills being raised and getting taxed here and there. But we need to look and make sure that our ambulance rates are competitive and they stay in line with what I E M S is charging. If they have an increase, I need to come back and we're going to come to the council and say, look, we need to increase our ambulance rates by a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars. But we need to do that to stay competitive and stay on track with the city and make sure that we're not losing any money. And yes, but our ambulance billing is better than some of the others in the county, absolutely.
Uh, Rob, wanted to ask you, what you was talking about, the third ambulance and getting some income on that going. Do you have any thoughts of, of what it would cost to run that and, and have EMS inside of there? I know you've kind of said about part-time possibly or something like that.
Run a part, part-time personnel because that's going to be your cheapest option. And I'll take a look back through the salary rates. Your paramedic, part-time paramedic is around twenty-eight dollars. Part-time E M Ts will be around twenty-two. So, you times that out for either an eight-hour day or a ten-hour shift. But your return on investment, we would only schedule that truck. Our guys can tell you, if they, you probably have seven of them standing up right now, tell you, I know what shift I E M S is short. They have, a shift is constantly short. And our guys are making anywhere from twenty-four to thirty-two runs a shift when they're short. If you had a third ambulance in service, you would increase your, your transports for that day. There's also other ways to keep that truck busy. We're always taking calls from Beach Grove Meadows, the Waters, Alton High for transports to the hospital. And we can't take those because we are an emergency service. We are a nine-one-one service and we don't do ambulance transports. But if you had a third truck in service, if they weren't busy, they could absolutely take those runs and it's guaranteed money for the city.
That's guaranteed. Yeah, that's what I was going to say. That's guaranteed.
Well, but the second part of my question was, do we have the, the personnel-
Yeah.
-that would be able to do that? And what kind of income are we thinking about? I mean, I know you said that we bringing around one, one point six, one point seven million. Currently with what we have, are we looking at an additional six hundred thousand doing that or?
Yeah, I, I would, like I said, I, what I would like and what I would ask for is some oversight from the council and working with me and the union and making a partnership to say, okay, well, here's what we're doing and here's how we're getting there and keep everything above board. So, you can see, you can explain to your constituents and the public and everyone knows what's going on and why we're doing it and actually how much money we're making off this to reinvest those dollars back into the services. But I think it's a partnership and it's something, and that's why we do these workshops, so we can throw out some ideas and see what we can't do to make things better. And I greatly appreciate that.
So, if those part-time people were assigned to that truck, if they had an issue and they couldn't make it to work, then if they needed to go up-
Truck wouldn't be in service that day.
And then if they were available more, could they offset some of the overtime? Could they go to another truck to over, offset some of that overtime?
Yeah, that's, that's a very, very good question. If we had a part-time truck schedule and we had someone calling sick, what we could do is utilize a person from that truck to cover, to make sure-
To reduce that over-
Reduce overtime, but you still had staffing on the station. There's, there's a lot of different things with that that would be positive for the city. Like I said, our, our medics know, we, we know their schedule, I E M S, we know what shifts are short. We, we know that would definitely take runs and it would keep a, a truck here in the city. And I, I had questions from you guys too about mutual aid, why we do it. And Reagan's going to talk about that a little bit later. But what I did, I also pulled up our runs. And there's a national response time. The ultimate goal is to, from the point of dispatch to getting to your patient at eight minutes. And that's the national standard, or eight minutes. I E M S and the CAD, and you've probably heard people talk on Facebook about the CAD. Well, let's shorten that CAD distance. And well, they just can't shorten it. You look at your response times and our response times that fall under that eight minute, we had one thousand one hundred and forty-six runs that was under that eight-minute timeframe. So, that tells you that the bulk of your runs are within Beach Grove and the surrounding area. And that's a very good standard and a great way to look at it. If you can decrease that time up to nine minutes, you gain additional two, almost two hundred runs. It's twelve hundred and ninety-one runs that we've done within nine minutes. And then within the ten-minute timeframe, we did fifteen hundred, twelve runs within that fifteen-minute timeframe. And we have to have mutual aid. And we have to have mutual aid. Our trucks are busy, but Beech Grove is also busy. On Saturday, we had three EMS runs come out at the same time, and we had a City Lawrence truck at Fifth and Main with a patient. And, you know, I've heard people say, "Well, you just need, quit running mutual aid." Well, what happens when other cities say, "Well, Beech Grove's doing it, we're not gonna do it." And now you have someone at Fifth and Main who has to wait thirty minutes, an hour for an ambulance. That's criminal.
Is state, is mutual aid...
So, we just can't do it.
Is mutual aid legislated, state legislation?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, what is that shift that takes so much, that's so busy? What shift is that?
It's A shift.
And what time is they, what's that out?
It's a full twenty-four hours.
Oh, okay.
So, it's primarily the day shift.
Day shift.
The half of Indianapolis, I E M S A shift, their front day half, A shift, very understaffed.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rob, I got a question for you.
Are you going to have to come back to the council for an additional appropriation this year?
We have to come back every year because it's coming out of public safety.
Yeah, again, as Jeff stated, we plan for that every year, so it's a savings. If you look at it from like your personal finances, you have your savings account, and then you have your account you spend your money out of. We always put aside that public safety money till the very end of the year, and then we transfer it into our general fund. So, that's been standard for at least a decade.
Well, last year you came back for four hundred thousand, and the year before, I can't remember the dollar amount, but you told us at that time that you would not come back this year, and here we are again, and you're talking about putting on another ambulance. We can't even afford the two we got.
It's, I'm gonna let you speak to Reagan. She's gonna go over the salaries and category one. And like I say, that two hundred and eighty-eight, five hundred that I spend out of my budget each year, it's never been over. Last year, we ended up giving money back. This year, it's gonna be close, but definitely won't go over the two eighty-eight five. We had Indiana Foundation come in and lift the back part of the station this year. That took a bulk of our category four, but needed to be done because that station was built on a landfill. And they ended up putting supports thirty-five feet in the ground to find stable ground to support the back of that building. So, that was money well spent. Then we had an H VAC unit went down for the station. That was ten grand for a new H VAC unit. Prices are just incredibly high this year, cost of business is across the board, it's terrible for everybody. But we will get through it and get through our category two, three, and four under this year.
Thank you.
So, how many ambulances do we have currently on the station?
We currently have four ambulances on the station. Two primary ambulances are staffed for the contract twenty-four-seven. One is a reserve truck when we have ambulance go down for a maintenance issue. We have another secondary reserve, which is medic fifty-eight. That truck was re-chassis in twenty eighteen out of North Carolina, and it's a mechanical backup only. With this new truck coming in, I'll approach the Board of Works to put that medic fifty-eight up on government auction site, and hopefully we'll get some money back for the city.
So, we have four of them now, and how many are on currently leased out?
Three.
Three. So, the new one, if we get it, that'll be our fourth lease, correct?
Correct.
Except with...
Yeah. And that's what, again, asking the city, keep that money in there for that ambulance, pay off that first lease, so we're not incurring more debt, we'll push back the date of delivery, and then start it once that other lease is paid off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We all having fun? Not stressful at all today, right?
No.
Easy decisions left and right. All right, so I've got a little statement prepared, if I may, and then I can answer any questions that you guys have for me. But council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of Beech Grove V M S. Our twenty-twenty-six budget request is simple. We need the resources to continue protecting Beech Grove effectively, efficiently, and with the quality our citizens deserve. First, I want to recognize our employees. Our medics and E M Ts work long, demanding hours under the most stressful conditions. They deserve fair compensation. Per union contract, they are due a three percent wage increase in twenty-twenty-six. This is about more than honoring a contract. It's about retaining experienced employees, avoiding costly turnover, and sending a clear message that Beech Grove values the men and women who protect it. When we talk about funding, Beech Grove V M S is unique. As you can see from the Excel spreadsheet I've handed out, sorry, forgive me, I hate public speaking. In twenty-twenty-five, we are projected to generate one point six million to one point seven million dollars in revenue. I've lowballed that number for our purposes this evening. For twenty-twenty-six, we are asked for one point eight million dollars in category one funding, meaning nearly ninety percent of our request is covered by what we generate. It is important to understand, however, that B G M S does not keep any of this money. Every dollar we collect goes directly back into the city funds, not our department. And compared to the old fire-based EMS model, B G M S is operating more cost-effectively. Again, as you can see from the spreadsheet, in twenty-twenty-one, the Beech Grove Fire Department cost the city five point two million dollars. With the current fire merger, B G M S now operates at two hundred and ten thousand dollars less than what the city was paying then, while still generating more revenue back into city funds. That is savings and efficiency working hand in hand. There's also been some, stroking, there's also been some confusion about public safety local income tax or public safety lit. By law, these dollars cannot be used for general expenses. They are restricted to public safety, specifically EMS and police. That means EMS is not competing with parks, roads, or other services for those funds. Supporting B G M S with public safety lit is using that money exactly as intended. Mutual aid is another essential part of what we do. Emergencies do not stop at the city line. Other departments will provide support when Beech Grove is overwhelmed, and our willingness to respond in turn ensures that we remain a trusted and respected partner. Our citizens also live, work, and travel outside of Beech Grove daily. If one of them is injured just beyond our borders, mutual aid ensures they receive the same high-quality care. Another safeguard we must maintain is our reserve ambulances. As Rob, our chief, was talking about, when frontline trucks go down for maintenance or repairs, the other week we had a siren go out for no apparent reason at all. That reserve was there to ensure continuous service and prevent dangerous coverage gaps. Without reserves, citizens' lives are at risk. Finally, our strength lies in our people. B G M S has a higher retention rate of paramedics than most agencies. Many of our medics are also nurses, educators, and instructors, bringing unmatched knowledge to every call. Most importantly, they live here, they work here, and they see Beech Grove as citizens, citizens as neighbors, not just numbers. I also want to make it very clear, B G M S has no intention of hurting the city financially. We understand the pressures of balancing a budget, and we are completely amenable to negotiating with Mayor Kaufman to find solutions that work for everyone. We want to be partners with the city, not a burden. Council members, B G M S is asking for one point eight million dollars in twenty-twenty-six category one funding, nearly matched by the one point six million dollars we generate for the city. We do not keep any of that revenue. It all goes back to city funds. With public safety lit restricted to EMS and police, that money is already dedicated to public safety. Approving this budget honors our union contract, ensures reliable coverage with reserve ambulances, recognizes the value of our employees, and fulfills the promise of excellent public service this council was elected on, all while saving the city money compared to past models. Simply put, funding B G M S protects Beech Grove both financially and in terms of public safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reagan. So, one question for you. Well, first off, I'd like to say, it's awesome that you guys cover ninety percent of your own budget. I think that's awesome, to be able to get that money back, you know, that's saying something.
Yes.
But as far as having the reserve vehicle, I know Rob was talking about, you know, maybe getting another one on the road and generating more revenue, totally makes sense, I understand that. But it also seems that having it as a reserve vehicle, and something goes down, like you said, the siren, a weird quirky thing. So, when that happens, if we didn't have that other ambulance as a reserve, then we would also be losing money.
Correct.
So, it's a question of whether or not this is, that's a great idea to do, you know, cost-effective or not, so.
We rely on them often, and if we can't transfer trucks, God forbid something goes down, then we're down to one truck and maybe even two if both go out. And then we're not able to provide the service that we promised the citizens of this community or help turn profit in any way.
Right, yeah. Something to think about.
Thank you, sir.
You have the revenue on here, what about the expenses?
The expenses?
Yeah.
Sir, anything operational is not my jurisdiction, I'm just here to negotiate category one.
Okay, but that's the second time I've heard revenues. Well, they could bring in a million dollars, but if you cost two million to do that, it's not a venture that we should be doing. And I have that problem with the amount of runs that are made outside of Beech Grove, but yet the Beech Grove citizens are paying for these expenses, and I don't think it's fair to the citizens. But I know, I've seen numerous times that Beech Grove ambulance is not at a run in Beech Grove because they're out in Indianapolis.
Yeah, unfortunately, we do provide mutual aid, but even if three runs come out in Beech Grove, we'll still have to rely on I E M S to help us cover that.
Well, I E M S is definitely underpaid compared to the salaries of citizens, or of the Beech Grove V M S.
We do have a competitive pay scale, that is correct, but I can a hundred percent assure you that if we were to become I E M S, you guys wouldn't get any money at all. There would be no revenue going to a general fund whatsoever.
Well, we don't have to run runs in Indianapolis either. That's a big consideration to a lot of citizens in Beech Grove. It's taken them so long to get there. The other day, there was fifteen minutes, the fire truck sat there for fifteen minutes while they was waiting on an ambulance. And it's not fair to the citizens of Beech Grove.
I agree, it's unfortunate, and healthcare is, there is unfortunately just a national shortage right now. Mutual aid is state legislature, we do have to respect and provide that for I E M S as well as they have to provide it for us. Response times are just difficult, it's...
Can you give me a ballpark figure of I E M S pay?
Not off the top of my head, but I'd be happy to look into it.
More to the minimum wage in than it does to the competitive level.
No, but I'd be happy to look into that for you.
I would appreciate that.
Does anyone else have any questions for me? All righty, gang, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob, thank you, Reagan. A couple things to add to that. I know the union's not involved with categories two, three, and four, but when we did enter into that agreement, a lot of the expenses for categories two, three were moved over to the Board of Public Works and Safety. So, all the utilities, the communications, the telephones, the health insurance, all of that, and that department is paid out of the Board of Works as well. So, the numbers would be a little bit higher versus the ones that she presented tonight, so just to paint a clearer picture of that. Up next, we have Beech Grove P D, so I'd like to call Chief Maurice to discuss the police budget for Beech Grove.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening, Chief.
I thought I'd have a speech for you, but seeing as how this is going tonight, I'll be super brief. Category one is covered by the contract, the labor agreement with the F O P Lodge eighty-six. Categories two, three, and four, I don't think they went up at all. And so, after speaking with the mayor, we've agreed to meet. Most of those categories are bare minimum. However, there is one or two that I can probably cut some out of there and also out of the public safety fund for somewhere, once we talk and actually hammer it out a little better. I think I can get down out of those about fifty to a hundred thousand dollars out of the budget for that. One thing I will point out, and I will not speak on the contract very much, but I will tell you that you do have an agreement with that, meaning it's an ordinance and you have to fulfill it. And your city's financial advisor has already advised you that the budget is funded the way it was posed. So, with that, that means that both those contracts are, can be met. That's what that means when he said that. So, I will just point that out. Also, just remember, when you're asking your employees to not take a raise or to take a pay cut, you're saying that you don't want to pay for the services that are provided to you and the citizens. And you've kind of displayed that when you don't want your citizens to pay for services that are costing the city a lot of money, such as your sewer, when you voted down increases on sewer rates just to pay for what is being serviced to you, not extra, just what is being serviced. So, just remember, when you take those votes and when you sit up there and ask for cuts, that that's what you're asking the employees that work for you, that allow Beech Grove to be what Beech Grove is, to take a pay cut and to do what they're doing out there daily, daily, not monthly, daily. What they're putting up with, what they're dealing with, to do it for less. And that might not be fair either. So, when you throw out fair and not paying for services, just remember that's what you're telling the employees. Any questions?
So, if your salary is not...
Again, this is a loaded question, and I don't, can't believe you do this, but I shouldn't be. I am covered by the contract.
Okay.
I do not have a contract with the city, I am covered by the contract. My salary is set by the contract, so that's a loaded question.
No, no, it was a...
It's a loaded question, I'm covered by the contract.
But thank you, thank you.
I'd just like to state, before I became the clerk treasurer, you guys went seven years straight without a raise. When I became the clerk treasurer, the next seven years, you got three percent each year.
I, we, we have talked about that, and we know that you have done that. However, you've been told that it is funded, and I guarantee I can ask one more question, and I know the answer, but if you want me to ask it, I will. How many of you have reached out to your state representative or state senator to help write Senate Bill One? One.
Multiple times, and my...
But has anybody else looked, reached out to find a solution for that? No. So, we're painting this picture of doom and gloom, but we've done nothing as a body up here to see what we can do to correct it. Then, I know, because we went to the same council meeting since two thousand and four, right? I used to watch you get up and talk before you got in local government. In two thousand and eight, it was doom and gloom, right? City was going under. How many...
City was going under.
How many people did we lay off?
We didn't lay off any.
That's right. And how many in two thousand and twelve, when it was dire, did we lay off? Zero. We've not laid it off because we work it out, we figure it out. That's what we do, okay? That's what we do. We go, and they change things on the bill, and we get our funding, and we move on. But you gotta stop painting this dire picture without doing anything about it. You have a great group of officers that go out there and have taken sixty-some guns off the streets. I have two that were on light duty this year for fighting. We've had twenty-one resistors, twenty-eight pursuits, that these guys are going out and getting bad guys, right? That's what you want them to do. That's what you want them to do, you ask them to do that, that's what they're doing daily. You have police departments that like to get referenced, and we get compared, see now you got me on a soapbox, that will tell you, give it to Beach Grove, they can go still be cops. I've showed up on the scene where they're like, glad you guys are doing something today, because we wanted to be cops today. And they come help us, and that's your big department that likes to get referenced, and we get compared to. But guess what, we don't get paid like them anymore, but they're out there doing it. And when my young officers come to me and say, am I gonna have a job in twenty years? I tell them, we'll be alright, it was like this in two thousand eight. We just have to get through the budget cycle, and they're gonna have to do something about getting the funding. But that's, that's your job, that you're gonna have to do that. We've reached out, I've reached out, now you have to. But you gotta stop painting that picture. I'm one of the only departments in central Indiana that's fully, fully staffed. Think about that. Police departments will tell you, oh, we can't get people, I don't have to tell you that. We are fully staffed, fully staffed. And there's a few reasons for that. One, we generally have your support. Two, the citizens usually support us, we pay decent, we have great camaraderie, we have great equipment, because we've found ways to make it work. But you gotta stop painting this dark picture all the time, without doing anything about it. Okay, sorry, any other questions?
I would like to say, uh, you know, we do support you guys, uh, we have in the years past, and we continue to do it. As far as painting the doom and gloom, you know, you're, you're looking at us solely up here, but really, a lot of the doom and gloom has come from, you know, the other side. We've had Jeff come up here and tell us about SB one, and how dire it is, and how much money we have to save. We've had the mayor do the same thing, we've heard it over and over, we're not actually saying that.
Without doing anything about it, and you just said that you haven't done anything about it.
I didn't actually say that, you asked who has reached out. Just because we haven't went one hundred percent and talked to the, the senators about it, or the representatives about it, doesn't mean that we're not doing anything, or, or looking into it, and trying to figure out avenues as to how to pay for things. I mean, you're, you're getting a little upset with us a, about something, saying that we're not gonna do anything. Nobody's up here has even made any kind of decision about a budget yet. I mean, we're, we're up here trying to figure out what we're gonna do. I mean, that, that's why we're here tonight, th- this is a workshop.
You talked about a five percent decrease across the board.
Who is, who is?
He said it.
I'm still for it.
He said it in an email, that got posted all over social media, don't act like it didn't happen, it did.
Yes, he said it tonight, just.
Okay, so, what, uh, how, how many, how many people up here have said that, though? I mean, I, 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 I heard, you just said two people, I mean, this is the entire council, I mean.
Okay, anyway, do you have any questions on my budget before I get to eighty-six?
We haven't even heard from all of you, but I get, we haven't met with you guys. That's what you're saying, I haven't met with you, but Count Mattens, we haven't met about this budget at all.
Correct, correct, you know, it.
So I, I, I don't know what you're doing behind the scenes, because we haven't had that conversation.
But we haven't had this conversation, because our timing does not match up. You know, you, you close at four o'clock, I don't even get off work until that time.
Four o'clock?
Huh?
City Hall does, but I, I can assure you, I, I work all past that, I, I make myself bills on weekends, and I, so.
I think he was talking about Playstation closing for.
We're open twenty-four hours a day. Yes, sir.
Chief, I absolutely agree with you about reaching out and doing our part, I'm, I'm with you on that, absolutely. I think a lot of this is coming from, um, like, for example, me and Mr. Duffer had a meeting with the mayor. Mayor not to put you on the spot or nothing, but I asked him point blank, Mr. Duffer can back me up, will there be a Beach Grove in two thousand twenty-eight? And his response was, I don't like that question, it scares me. Mr. Duffer, am I telling the truth?
Yes.
Okay, so when we hear that.
And then I follow up with, let's finish my statement.
Hold on, can I, can I finish? I appreciate it, sir. So we hear that, and we go back to our constituents, and that's the message that we're getting, I think that's where a lot of this is coming from. And I'm not pushing back at all, I mean, I agree with you, we need to do our part as well. I'm just trying to be transparent as the mind, the mind process and the thought.
So I agree with you.
Yes, yes, sir.
But if I go back, and by looking at what the council has done previously, right, with.
This council, or?
This council.
Okay.
And, you know, I've been doing this a long time.
Sure, yes, sir.
Previous council.
Yes, sir.
Same financial advisor told you that if you don't fund the sewer properly, it's gonna bury the city. And you didn't move forward with the proposals to make sure that doesn't happen. You put a Band-Aid on it.
Correct.
Correct?
Right.
You put a Band-Aid, so you didn't listen then.
Well, we put a Band-Aid on it until we can figure out how to go by usage as part of the reason, way to fund it. Nobody wants to raise, I mean, we're listening to our people, nobody wants to raise the increases.
That's sho- it's shocking that people don't wanna pay more for their services, but yet.
Well, a lot of people, I mean, again, this is a different, another conversation about usages, but.
That's, that's.
I'm just trying to tell you where we're coming from, based on what we're told.
But have you given the confidence to any of your employees that you'll find a solution?
I think that's what we're here doing, we're, we're listening first. We're listening first, and then we'll go about doing that.
Okay, I apologize then.
No, I, no, there's no reason to apologize at all.
So, when you said that about two thousand twenty-eight, what was my next statement?
I don't, remember, I was, yeah.
Refresh me.
Okay, so my next statement was, if nothing happens, there will be no Beach Grove. But if we work as, as a, no, okay.
I'm trying to remember, sir.
Okay, we worked as a unit, we worked as, as a unified front, and implemented a few things, the wheel tax, the local income tax, reaching out to our legislators, and encouraging them to make changes to the property tax bill, so we can make sure we can fund our government, that's where you see a Beach Grove beyond two thousand twenty-eight. So that, that, that's what we said, but yes, as it's currently written, yes, it, it does scare me, but I think there's, I think there's opportunity in the future.
Right, I'm just, I'm just giving feedback on why that's the thought process of the council.
That was, that was how the conversation went, again, I, I think we, we need to be optimistic, but also be realistic at the same time, right? I think today, there are opportunities in the, in the future, with reaching out to your legislators, to make sure they do correct us, because the city of Beach Grove won't, it'll be all municipalities across the state of Indiana. Every single one's gonna be here, are.
Absolutely.
And if you follow local news, you're gonna see, they're interviewing all these elected officials and mayors, and, and city council members, um, and departments across, across the state about how they're concerned about the future if SB one isn't corrected, so.
And ju- and just to address the chief, this is my tenth budget time, and every time, we talked about supporting you, giving you what you needed, hands down, unanimous, fund, fund the station, fund the tactical training center, fund your wages, fund everything you need, every, nobody up here would ever, ever want to take anything that, that you need for your safety and to doing your job. This is something we've not been in, I've, this is my tenth year, I've never set up here and had to have the anxiety that I'm having right now to make sure you stay Beach Grove, to make sure you stay Beach Grove, and you stay Beach Grove. This is the tenth year, and this is the first time I've ever had this level of anxiety over it. So, so do not, do not say that, that for some reason, that we're not with you, and we're not giving you what you've done. When you go back and you look at my voting record, one hundred percent, every time, it was for your benefit and your for well-being. So that's what I'm gonna say right now.
And who was it that raised their hand that said they reached out to representatives?
I did, and I continue to do, I continue, but I also know that those same legislatures are telling me, it's that we got a snowball's chance in hell of that happening, okay?
And we'll see, and we'll see.
Okay, that's because, because Braun and the, and the Republican legislatures don't want it, okay? So that's what they're telling me, we have a snowball's chance in hell of that happening.
We'll see.
Okay.
Any other questions on the budget?
I'd just like to make one statement to that, too, is I can remember when, uh, Chief Schwartz, over and above the budget, he dance, came in to me and says, Dan, I need some, uh, police cars. I wrote him a check for three hundred thousand dollars, we found it, we looked for it. So no, we're not against you, I feel like you're more against us than we are you.
Any other budget questions? Uh, with the groundwork, Tyler, it's all yours.
Thanks, Council, for having us, I know we've gone a lot over, uh, the police department and other categories in the police department. Our contract runs through two thousand twenty-six, and like we've, uh, emailed back and forth, we will start negotiating in the spring of next year. Uh, according to our contract, we are slated for a three percent raise, like EMS, uh, just like everyone else here. So that's what we're asking for in this council. We are willing to negotiate a little bit, this is part of a negotiation. We've talked to the mayor, we've met with the mayor at least three times this year about the contract, and we've heard where you guys are at, as far as the city's concerned. We've heard Jeff Peters, and we are with you guys as a city. And I can tell you that none of these officers are more proud to be Beach Grove police officers than anything else. You guys are proud of them, and we're proud of having you guys support us as a city. So I want you to know that all of us love putting on the Beach Grove uniform to work for a city, and none of us have any other intention but to be a Beach Grove police officer for our entire career. And that'll tell you by our turnover rates, by how many officers we have start here and finish here. So I think that goes a long way, and I think we need to thank the police officers and EMS that's here tonight to show them some support from the city. So like I said, I'm here to answer any questions you have, but just know that you have our support as a police department, and I'm sure EMS is the same way, we support you guys, we're willing to work with you, just like all, both EMS and the police department has said. Those discussions are held between us and the mayor in a private setting, but we're here for any, any ideas that you have, any suggestions, and we will take those to heart, just like we have from the beginning of the year, from the time Jeff Peters came to, came to the council, told us where we'd be in two thousand twenty-eight. And every officer is with us, with the union, with FOP, on working with you to make sure that we are still the Beach Grove Police Department for the foreseeable future. None of us wanna go anywhere, and we're happy to work with you to make sure that happens. So we want you to be clear that we want to be here, so that's all I really have to say. But I'll take any questions or suggestions that we can work through, uh, with our future meetings with the mayor. I know we're gonna have several in the coming months, and then again, we start with negotiations next year for the next contract.
I'd just like to thank, uh, you guys for trying to find some money in the budget, I was gonna say to the chief, but you got upset, so I decided to wait. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Couple more departments to go through, councilors, um, up next, I'd like to call up Stephanie Braman with the, uh, Beach Grove Senior Citizens Center to kinda go over her budget, uh, that you have in front of you. Stephanie?
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, so after speaking with the mayor, um, and looking through, our budget is the smallest. We do provide a service, not like our EMS and police, they're awesome, thank you as a resident. This weekend, if I can say this, Saturday, we called you guys, because there was a drug deal going down. And I have my granddaughter in the car with us, and you guys arrived, and you took them out, along with some other ones. It was just amazing, just to see them work, they were like, it, it was like a spider, their tentacles, their legs reaching out. There was a lot of them, we thought there was only three, turns out, there were several. And just the danger you put yourselves into every day, I just wanna thank you.
Talk, guys, thank you.
So, uh, back to our budget, um, looking over it, um, there is, what we can give up, um, is our part-time position. If we can cut that back, um, we could do fourteen thousand, uh, maybe a little more if, if we get down real to the nitty-gritty. But we do provide a service for seniors. Our membership is up, um, with seniors staying home now, there's more incentives, encouragements of them not going to the nursing homes. Well, when they're at home, their health can decline, so the city provides the senior center for them. They can come out and get, uh, stimulation, uh, be with their peers, um, live longer, pay more taxes. So, and to be able to smile, to have that interaction with each other. Mr. McMillan, your wife took advantage of us a couple of times, she's went on a couple of trips with us in the years past, and a smile on her face told me she had a good time, a break from home, and a break from you down there at her flower shop.
Well, that's a good thing, I like to see a smile on her face.
Uh, we would take her again, just to give her some peace, but, um. I'm willing to work, we're willing to work, we'll take that down, I am, I talked to, um, I, I talked to Peggy, which, she works for me at this time, and, um, her and I both, we're one hundred percent sure we can handle this, um, you guys will never see us sweat. So if there's, yes.
How are you on volunteers? I mean, do you need more volunteers? And you know what I always say, when people say, don't let them see you sweat, don't let them see you wipe it, you can see the sweat.
See, 'cause that's work, sweating's work, yes. Uh, so volunteers, that's really tricky for me, um, we do have, uh, a couple volunteers, but my seniors are, you know, they, they can be fragile, uh, they can be easily taken advantage of. So, um, I'm very cautious, anyone to tell you, they've come in, they've offered, and I, um, I would rather put in double work than have someone take advantage of one of my seniors. So, um, Aubrey, who's not here right now, he volunteers, and when he, he gives us his time on Friday, we work him, 'cause we trust him, so, and we know where he lives. So, uh, to answer, that's the only volunteer we currently have. Would we open the door for more? Yes, I would, after I, I went over him with a fine-toothed comb, and, and made sure that they'll be alright. My people will be alright.
Stephanie, clarify for us all the, what, the, some seniors pay like a fee or registration, that's, that's for, kind of, you told me this many times.
So this is the deal, you don't have to.
Right.
There is a club inside of our center. And the reason why the mayor, Ishweiler, uh, formed us the senior center, because there was a need, well, the seniors that took advantage of that felt a need to give back, and so they started the club, and they give back. We, uh, they bring in the kids from the city school, from Holy Name, we don't care where you go, if you're a baby, we love ya. We also give back in community events, if you guys haven't been down there during Halloween, I encourage you to, or Christmas. Uh, we have reindeers, they're live, and, no, Dan, you cannot ride one of them. But we, they come back and they work those, they work those, it's a safe way for them to see the kids in the community, and a, a safe way for the kids to get something back from the city, um, yeah.
And then you raise money with efforts you have for, uh, like when you have bakery, bake sales, and you have, um, your, um, yard sale type thing, your.
Yes, they raise money on that, and that, those things pay for the events that go, they're special events, like, um, musicians, guest speakers, I typically don't charge, but sometimes they do. So they pay for those special things, um, for their bingo luncheon, if you guys was to come down on a second Friday, you have to sign up and pay by Wednesday, but they have a good time, they have a good meal, um, they pay for all that, so.
And then you do a good job outside resources, as far as getting, uh, getting people to donate?
Yes.
From, from.
We have sold our seniors' kidneys, I can't tell you how many times. We do, we, we get sponsorships from the, the home healthcare agencies, because, right, they, they wanna come in and get to know you, so they can help if when you need it. Um, we also, nursing homes, um, and even with those people, I'm still leery. Um, they have a very high turnover rate, so I'm still a little standoffish, but we do get sponsorships from them.
Sure.
Ball Festival is a huge fundraiser, it is a huge fundraiser, um, so this year, uh, please attend, I'm looking for a second person to back up the mayor. Um, I talked him into getting into the dump tank, which is gonna help fund our, uh, mills for, holiday mills for senior citizens. I think it was, who wants to dump chat?
Counselor McMillan said he'll do it.
I was gonna go talk to his wife. Nobody wants to dump it, Tiffany, but I will talk to Suzie and see if we can get her husband in.
There you go, Dan.
We'll make some good money.
I think the expected highs are in the seventies that week, unless it changes.
I make enough chili for three hundred and fifty people, and then I got a recipe from, um, the EMS, uh, director. It's a hundred-year-old, uh, coney sauce recipe, and, um, it was a big hit, so I make that as well, we have a, a good time. Nice, fun, low-cost meal for families, and someplace you can sit down, and, yeah. We give back.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the laughs.
Yes.
Thank you, Stephanie. Got a couple left here, we have the, uh, Parks Department and the.
We got a couple left here. We have the Parks Department and the Hornet Park Community Center. So whoever gets up here first, he wants it first. Tom or Tiffany. Tiffany, come on up. Ladies first.
I would say age before beauty, even in this case. Beauty before age. Hi. How are you guys doing?
Good.
Good. I like how you formulated this. We went really serious and now we're going to make everybody laugh. Yeah, I like that. So we're kind of in the same boat as Stephanie. We have one of the smallest budgets and we offer community-based programs out there at the community center. And we are really wanting to leave that as our focus for 2026. So for 2026, the center's focus is to maintain the programs that we're already doing, which would be our pantry and our kind of events that we're already doing, like the summer concert series, touch a truck, that kind of stuff. And then also continue to focus on center maintenance and upkeep and cleanliness in the organization. Because that's the best way to manage your budget, is to know what you have, so you don't order stuff you don't need, right? We're also kind of in the same boat as Stephanie as well, where unfortunately, the biggest place we could afford to cut would be category one. I don't think I'd be doing my job as a director if I didn't look at all the options, even if they're the uncomfortable options and the options that are not very well received by everybody, right? They're hard decisions, but that's what we're appointed to do. It's what we're elected to do. The other categories, you know, category three is our maintenance. It's a 30-year-old building. Takes a lot to upkeep that. There's a lot of stuff we can't fix right now, simply because we don't have the money in our budget. That doesn't mean that I didn't look into category three. I do think we can afford to cut a little bit there. I really want to try not to cut anything from category two. Why? Because as we continue to see inflation, as we see Center One, as we see Big Beautiful, as we see some of these other things roll out, the community of Beach Grove needs somewhere to go, like the senior center, like the community center. They're going to need the food pantry. They're going to need a summer concert series that doesn't cost you to come out and enjoy our parks. They're going to need a family-friendly event to come out that doesn't charge you an arm and a leg, you know, to be there. So unfortunately, the biggest area we can cut is either category three or category one. I'm open for other suggestions. I'm always available to take phone calls, to take emails. I do have things drafted up. I'd be more than happy to send to the council, so you guys can look at it. And yeah, I'll answer any questions.
Do you have any ideas of anything, the way you can bring in more revenue?
Yeah, so currently, right now, we do have our non-reverting fund, which is through our rentals. And we have brought in a total of like $43,000, just based on rentals. But again, it's a 30-year-old building.
Yeah.
Carpet is coming up. Wallpaper is coming down. Stains are on the carpet. So we do have to be cautious when we're raising those rates, that even though it would keep us in competitive, even though it would keep us like competitive with surrounding municipalities if we did raise them, we want to make sure that we're not outpricing the citizens of Beach Grove because we're here to serve them. But also that we're providing a up-kept and well-maintained facility if we do raise those rates. Within the community center, we are talking about different fundraising initiatives and opportunities. There's always corporate sponsorships. This year alone, we brought in around $20,000 between sponsorships and grants. And that's going to be the focus for next year, is what kind of grants are open to us, what kind of corporate sponsorships are open to us.
And then there's the Parks Board Dinner. That brings in a pretty decent amount of money that goes into the non-rever, or that, is that?
The Parks Foundation. So the Parks Foundation is separate from the Parks Department. So they operate as a 501(c)(3). And then we partner, myself and Tom partner with them on any kind of needs that they feel like they could kind of help supplement.
Does any of that go to the Hart Park?
Well, some of it does, yes. But it does not go into, again, it's like, it's their own fund. And then myself and Tom can approach them and talk about what kind of.
But it benefits. It benefits.
Yes, yeah.
Do you take any kind of volunteers on doing any of the maintenance?
We absolutely do. So I don't know if, Stephanie might know Charlie, who, does he come to the senior center, Charlie? No? So we're very blessed to have an amazing community who is skilled in multiple different areas. And Charlie has been coming to our breakfast club and our car club. And he used to be a plumber. He's now retired. So he will come and he will check things out for me, and he will let me know if I need to call or if Charlie can just go buy a part and he'll replace it for me. My dad's a mechanic, so I have him come and look at my cars. We have an overwhelming amount of volunteers who come every Wednesday to support the pantry, and we're always growing. The only thing we're lacking on right now with volunteers is our events. That's kind of hard to get volunteers to come out for, but other than that, like our programs are pretty well-staffed for volunteers, so.
And then you have the Going Green in the Grove, which is an event that we give away hundreds of trees.
Absolutely.
To people to, and, you know.
And it's really important that these, I personally feel like it's really important to keep these events that we do as a city as low cost as possible, so that as many people can attend as they can. So when we talk about starting to decrease certain areas, then we're talking about having to charge more, right? So for example, our Movies by the Bonfire event is starting this weekend. It is a free event to attend. You do receive free popcorn, free movie. Last year, we didn't charge for a meal. This year, we are, but you're still receiving free popcorn and free smores. However, if you want something a little bit extra, it's $5. So we're trying to always balance between offering something free and offering something at low cost or very little cost.
But the cost of a meal is a lot less than taking the family to the.
Oh, absolutely. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, up next is Tom Hanen, Parks Department. Come on up, Tom.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Number one item in my budget is the part-time staff that I have. As you may or may not know, I'm the only full-time person, so part-time employees are, man-hours in the park are the number one most important thing that we have. And I would propose that they get their 3% raise, which would cost just over $2,000 for that increase. I'm proposing my salary stay the same next year as it is now. I've eliminated four small categories and false, four small line items in category two, three, and four. And then I proposed a 10% reduction in the balance, which even with the salary increase for the part-time workers, would end up being a 4.4% reduction in the budget for the year.
Overall, that's compared to, from last year. That's, right, okay. Thank you for that.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
And the part-time employees, only, their wages are what, 18, what is it? Is it up to, above 20 now?
With an increase, it would raise it to about 1860.
Tom, I got a question for you. I see them cutting grass all over the city, so they're not necessarily just cutting grass in the parks?
No, we cut all the right-aways and islands on Emerson Avenue. We cut Main Street.
That would be your part-time doing that also?
Yeah, that's all I have, part-time, so.
Why can't we take money out of DPW or one of them to pay them part-time people instead of having that come out of your budget?
Some of those DPW employees cut grass as well, and some of them are outsourced to, like Wildridge, some of the areas as well. But I mean, that's something, you always get to done, but I don't hear otherwise.
Right, no, I see them all the time.
It's just jobs that we've accumulated over the years as they came up. And to avoid duplication of services, we already had the equipment, so we took it on, you know.
But I seen like Wildridge is doing stuff too. Is that coming out of your budget?
No.
Or, okay, where's that come out of?
NVH.
NVH, okay.
Yeah. They do Main Street, a couple of the other more major intersections, the 465 interchange, they do the roundabouts. Open up Churchman, maybe a couple of ones off the side.
Okay. I mean, it's just something to think about, where, don't hurt your budget.
Something that we are changing on the park side is that we are moving over that one employee from the sewer who does the trail maintenance. Mr. Sewer, so we're moving that part-time employee over to his budget.
Okay.
The funds already exist for that. They're just going to move it into ours.
Where's compliance come out of?
Police.
Police.
Still police.
Okay.
Yeah, we talked about that earlier.
Yes, we did. My question is, have you considered moving that back to two people instead of three?
Well, let's continue with Tom first, and we can talk about that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it. That's the way of the budget.
I'd like to thank you for this. That's great to look at. Appreciate you taking the time to do that.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. All right, so that is all our department has. There are a few other areas of the budget that were in your packet. You won't see much of any increases on there. I know we have City Hall utilities. The clerk treasurer can speak to that one. We did just raise the sewer rates as a city. The council approved to raise those rates, so we will have to increase that budget on the general side. So we do pay sewer bills to the Beach Grove utility. So you see some increases there on those utilities for the city.
Yeah, the rest of the utilities assume the AES will go up 6% next year, towards the middle of the year, and 7% in 2027. I kind of planned for that. And then everything else just goes up as it does for everybody else, so we just have to account for that as well.
And those are just estimates, but we usually use most of those appropriations each and every year. And if there's money left over, then we go back to the general fund for the next year. The next one is the Fire IFD agreement, so that is a 3% increase each and every year. So we are budgeting that at 3.3 million, $654,090, which is a 3% increase of about $106,000 per the contract. And then other than that, we have the Parks Non-Reverting. That stays at $10,000. We have lease rental payment. That is for the police station bonds. That is on there at 1.1 million. You have fire pension. That stays the same. You have police pension. That's going to be up about 1%. You have.
Home Rule Fund Number Eight, which is SROs.
SROs, and that is on the police side. We have the education benefit for the police department. That is, we've always funded that at about $40,000. That'll go down to $20,000 next year. You have the opioid funds. Each year, we budget spending money out of the opioid funds. The council needs to provide any ideas on how we want to spend those. We have restricted and unrestricted. And we can get into the rules behind that at another time, but that'll stay the same for next year. Again, if you have any ideas of where you want to spend that money, feel free to present them to the council, and the council will have to vote on those. And I think that's.
I think the only one left is cable contractual.
Cable, yes.
Which can stay at 14,000. I've already stopped spending money out of that. That's typically who handles our streaming. So right now, that's me, so I've taken on that. But we do need to still keep it in order to do some upgrades as technology allows in terms of like the Senate bills that we have to, what am I trying to say?
Update streaming.
Update streaming, recording, storage for those videos, things like that, so. That will remain the same as well.
And that's the budget.
Is there any way, how much of a strain on the budget is overtime? Is there any way you can work with?
For which department?
For both, like, police or EMS?
I'm going to have to defer back to them to discuss that, because I'm not sure how they, with their scheduling. That is a, that is a.
Are there concessions they can make? Have you asked them, are there any concessions they can make as far as?
About the overtime?
Yeah.
No, but I can have that discussion with them, if you have any recommendations on that. I'm not sure. It's hard, because if they work overtime to staff either the ambulances or to make sure we're at minimums on the police department. You got to make sure we're at minimums. So if we have to do overtime, and they've already worked and have to fill a shift, so sometimes that's hard to prevent.
Well, it's a good conversation. It's a good, I mean, it's a conversation.
Yeah, I think they're, I think they're good on it now. I think they track that pretty well. I don't think they're just giving away overtime to give away overtime. I think they're there just because.
Think that or say that.
No, I know. I'm just saying, I think they monitor that pretty well, but I'd have to defer to them for specifics on that. But I can talk with them in the next couple of weeks about that as well.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
As far as IFD contractual, have you talked to anybody from Mayor Hogshead to 416 or whoever to possibly helping us out on that?
I have mentioned it to the 416 a couple of times about needing some help and assistance in the next couple of years about that. I think with SB1, nobody knew that was going to happen this year, okay? When that contract, right, wrong, or different, it is what it is. The contract's in place, okay? Not knowing the effects of SB1, I think it's something that we will have to kind of come as a unified front to talk to the state legislator to allow us to officially merge those services to get out of that contract. But I'm not sure how hard that's going to be. I know we've just got to start laying the groundwork for that. I've mentioned to the local 416 for their assistance with that. But I think that's, I think it's a possibility, but I'm not sure how that would happen or who exactly to talk to. But that's part of the discussions that I'll have with our state legislators to help them, to help us guide that.
Jefferson Shreve just came out with a large amount of money to give to Indy professional fire and police services and probably EMS, and see if we can get a portion of that. I was thinking it was like 150 million.
Oh, really?
It was a large amount of money. And, you know, since we're in this contract with Indy, can we talk to him? I mean, there's someone that's got to work with us to get out from underneath us, because it's going to bury this city.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's all hands on deck. I think everything's on the table. I think anything that we can help offset the decreases in the next couple of years, I think we need to work towards all of those. So that is one of them that I'm wanting to work on in the next couple of months, is speak with those individuals and have those conversations and hopefully find for a good solution in the future.
As we move forward and talk about the wheel tax, do we have grants that you're looking into, grants you're searching? What's the status of having grants to help us with offset costs? Are we looking at things, just grants for roads?
For a wheel tax? Well, you have to implement a wheel tax to be eligible for a grant.
I know that, but I'm asking you, are we looking at, are your scope, is your scope wide enough to look out to see if we do the wheel tax? How, you know, are the grants out there that you're actually looking at or thinking about or available or whatever?
I'm sorry, I'm confused by your question. Like grants towards, for the, for the wheel tax?
Right, right. I mean, if we implement a wheel tax, are there grants, are there, are you researching?
For the city or for the, for the homeowner, for the person owning the car? I guess that.
For the city. I mean, because the wheel tax will be used to, as a matching grant for roads.
For the community crossings.
Yes, yes. So, yes, so are we, do we have that, those grants in the makings or planned or?
So we apply for a community crossings grant every year.
Right.
And we were just awarded for 2026.
Okay.
So for 2027, before we apply for that, we'll have to have it implemented for collection in 2027.
Okay.
So, yeah, so yeah, that, for now, we're good. So we've already received it. The state says we don't have to have it implemented for the 2026. So yeah, so that's something that we'll have to work as a council to implement that for 2027.
In order to get those crossings.
Correct. As long as it's, I'm sorry, I thought you were asking about.
I apologize. It's the way I worded it. I apologize.
So in order to be eligible, it has to be implemented and approved by the legislative board by September of each year. So we have lots, I think we're up to 26 or 27 cities in the state who have already implemented it or in the process of completing it in September for implementation in 2026. But that's something that we'll have to discuss later as a council after we get out of budget season. So that's all I have on the budget. But I think, needless to say, I think it's pretty apparent tonight that our employees are what makes Beach Grove special. I mean, each and every department. Our employees are passionate. Our departments are passionate. They love the city and they will defend us to the end. And I think that's, I think it's what you see tonight. So I don't think they got worked up. I know somebody said they got worked up, but I think they're just passionate about our city. And they want to do everything in their power to help guide us towards the future. So thank you to all of our employees, whether it be police, EMS, our parks, City Hall employees, mayor's office, the Senior Citizens Center, the Hornet Park Community Center, DPW, sewer, streets apartments. We must continue to fight for them and to protect them and their jobs. And I think that's, we had some good discussions tonight, so thank you for that. We'll have our budget presentation on October 6th, and that'll be on first, and Sally Worrington's on first reading only that night. And then we'll have second and third readings on that third and Monday in October. And then we'll have second and third readings on that third Monday in October.
And that will reflect these department heads that said they're not gonna take the wage increase. All of that's gonna be included in our budget.
And then some, correct. So, I'll, I'll continue the discussions with the FOP and the 416 in the next week or two, finalize some of those numbers, get with our department heads and see again what, all these numbers, and put them, put them all, actually on paper, so we can actually get a better idea of where we're, where we're looking at for 2026 before we present it to you. But if there's any questions that you all have, feel free to reach out to me, reach out to department heads, if you're happy to meet with you anytime, to kind of go over those numbers as we get closer towards October. But we got some work to do, I think, with, with our discussions tonight. So thank you for being open, and thank you to our department heads for being here to, to discuss that. Any other questions or comments on the budget?
Well, I, I find it rather, you know, if, if there was discussion amongst any, anyone here, any of us, about, about a five percent raises, decreases, what's the state ask, is what the state ask the state of Indiana to do in all departments. I find that rather, that it'd be language, that, I don't, I'm not sure what word to even use, that, that when the state, before we got here, was saying, "I'm asking all the departments to make a five percent cut." That's what the state of Indiana laid out in order for, for us to get where we are here.
That's what they're doing for their budgets?
From what I understand, that's what the state of Indiana asked for everyone, the departments in the state to, to make a five percent cut.
Yeah, even the university.
Yes, yes. And, and that's libraries, that's a lot of services, I can't, but I just find that making it sound like we were these awful council for bringing that up when the state of Indiana has imposed that from departments across the state.
For, for the state budget, so, correct? They're not saying, I don't think they're putting...
But that affects us, because it's money that affects us.
No, we're not the state budget, though, we are the...
But it's mu, it's, it's money that affects, okay. That's all right. Thank you.
If there's any other comments on the budget, otherwise we'll go to council comments.
Start with me?
Yep.
Uh, thank you to everybody that was here tonight, all the departments, all apartment heads. Thank you to the work that's been done on this proposed budget so far by the mayor and by the clerk. I also want to thank the council for taking on this burden. It's not, it's not easy, as we know, as you can see. But I want to thank you guys for everything that we'll do until this gets approved. City Beach Grove's a hundred-and-twenty years old. We've proven over time that we are, can be really resilient. I guarantee you, this is just another chapter in our, in our city's history, hopefully. I can commit to, at least to the citizens of District Five and of Beach Grove as a whole, that I will reach out to state leaders and do my part. Not gonna speak for us, the council, to see what we can do about this, but I think there's gonna be tough conversations to have. Cuts are gonna need to be made. There's gonna be a lot of give and take in order to make a deal on this budget. So, I look forward to working with everybody involved, and including the citizens, which also make the city great. And last but not least, it's Fall Festival time. It's my favorite time of year in Beach Grove. I encourage everybody to get down there and have a good time for the Fall Festival. That's all I got.
Just like to say, "Beach Grove, you know." Just wanna thank everyone for just caring about each other. And pretty much what Mike was saying, I just appreciate everyone to care. I think if we start there, we'll be better.
Yes, ma'am.
Can't really say too much. They've kind of said it all right there. You know, I think everybody out here is passionate about the city and the, the future of our city. And, and I think that we, we have a lot of things that we have to figure out in order to keep things financed. And I mean, like, we've heard, nobody wants to spend any more money. I mean, a lot of us don't make any more money, so, you know, it's, it's tight. We, we all have to do the cuts. It sounds like a lot of the departments have made these cuts. You know, I applaud you for reaching out to them and asking them to do that. I applaud them for actually doing it. So, you know, I, I think, I think, you know, moving forward, we, we can actually make a little ground and wait to see what happens with SB One, you know, I mean, there's not a lot of, a lot of answers right now, not a lot of things that we can actually even talk to the people about, because they don't even know anything that's really happening. And the answers that you get are, "Well, we're gonna come back out and we're gonna talk about it." Well, okay, that, that's the answers that we're getting right now. So, until we actually get a little bit more, I think what they're doing, trying to make everybody tighten their belt as much as possible, and they're gonna come back and go, "Okay, well, this is not what we're gonna do." So, I hope that's what it is, and yes. I, I love the Fall Festival as well, and I, everybody ought to get down there, even though it's busy on the streets. It brings in money and people to the city.
Are you gonna ride the Scrambler, Ryan?
I just appreciate everyone's help. I think we can make it through this. I think every family budget reaches hard times. Every family budget has to take a look, step back, unless you're just independently wealthy and you've got money given to you. It's, it's not a bad thing to ask a family to come together and work together, even if it is, even if it is making concessions. I really want to thank the outside help, outside help from the community that's all-in with this on us and giving us advice and giving us their input and, and helping us find things that maybe we couldn't see ourselves. I'm not an accountant, but I, I, I just applaud and thank those departments who found some concessions and found a way to fill in the gap and work with us and give up a little bit. That means a lot. That means a lot.
Yes.
My main goal sitting up here is to keep Beach Grove, Beach Grove. If that means not giving a raise, I'm sorry. Like I say, when I first came into office, they went to seven previous years without getting one. But as soon as we got the finances back in order, they got a raise every year after that. And, you know, people said back then, "Well, there was nothing you could do." You know what? We put our heads together, rolled up our sleeves, we got the finances straight. When I left this city, we had four-point-four million in the bank, paid off tax anticipation warrant, which I was told I wouldn't be able to do. It was done. And, like I say, paid cash for police cars, fire trucks, everything else. We can get it back to this, but, you know, it, somebody's gotta give a little, and we can't put it on the citizens of Beach Grove. A lot of them can't even afford groceries. I can remember people coming in, paying their sewer bill with change, and now it's up to seventy-five dollars. My first call Saturday morning was about the sewer bill, where someone said, "Well, it's the July bill." Well, people don't realize we backed Bill a couple of months. And it, it's just hard to see some of these people that are suffering out there, and we can't put it on the backs of, you know, fourteen thousand people. And we need to do everything we can do to keep Beach Grove, Beach Grove. Thank you.
I'll reiterate what everyone else said. I'm with Dan. I want to keep Beach Grove, Beach Grove. I don't want to see it go away. I don't want to become part of Indianapolis. So, I appreciate the department heads and all of what they have done and giving up their raises. I really appreciate that, so.
Thank you. A couple of comments before we adjourn this night, tonight. As we said, Fall Festival is next week. Be sure to head out to Main Street later this month. September's a very busy month for the city of Beach Grove. On September twenty-seventh, we will have the Officer Tony twenty-fifth anniversary celebration, a member of him, on Main Street. So come out and support that event. Music on Main is October fourth on Main Street. This weekend, we have the monthly shredding and recycling event. It'll take place this Saturday from nine in and behind City Hall. And then lastly, we have, we have a new guest this evening. Hopefully, he comes back. Earlier tonight, the Board of Works approved the hiring of Tom Cochran, Tim Cochran, I'm sorry, who will... Tim will serve as the new DPW Director with the start date of September twenty-second. Tim brings a wealth of knowledge on DPW works and operations from the city of Indianapolis to this position, and I look forward to him joining the team. So, welcome, sir. So, he'll be back here, full-time here in a, in a couple of weeks. So, that is all, all I have this evening. Motion to adjourn.
I make said motion.
I'll second.
All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at nine-twenty. Thank you.